Hello, welcome to the 12th edition of On the Warrant, our little effort to inform our community about what's going on at town meeting. My name is Mark DeSalvo. I'm the elected town moderator. I'm joined by Melissa Rodriguez, our town manager. To my left is Dr. Greg Gilligan, our superintendent of schools, and Sasha Weinrich, immediately to my left, who is the chair of our finance committee. Generally, joining us would be the chairs of the school committee and the select board. Unfortunately, there's a scheduling conflict, unable to be in studio for Helen Picard, and Chris Nobley had a last-minute professional obligation that keeps him from being here. Notwithstanding, we know that we have a good crew here who's able to keep us all informed. I want to assure you that we're sitting here in studio unmasked. I want you to be aware that we are all fully vaccinated, as is the crew that is taping this, and we aim to operate in a safe environment at all times. Town meeting will be in our 375th year as a community, on Tuesday, June 15th, at 6:00 p.m. at the North Endover High School Joe Walsh Stadium. You are all welcome to attend. It will be, I promise, a safe, fair, open, and efficient environment. Safety is the byword. The protocols for our second Alfresco town meeting will be very much like it was last year, which was a quite successful event, as those who appreciated being in the sunshine. We will be modifying some of the rules so they'll be less restrictive, but we are asking that you wear a mask while you're traversing the venue, and you're more than welcome when you sit in socially-distanced seating to take off your mask, and when you come to the microphone to be able to speak on an unmasked basis. We're doing that principally because not all of us are vaccinated or choose to be vaccinated. And secondly, everybody has the right to attend town meeting, and our obligation is to assure that all who attend can be comfortable. So we don't want anyone who might be apprehensive or otherwise put a chill on the ability of those to attend town meeting. So as we all act in good faith, I invite you to do so as well. Now, on to what's going on at town meeting. Perhaps the most important thing we'll be doing at town meeting this year is passing our more than $100 million budget. Town manager, if you could walk us through the process, Melissa, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, happy to. So we have a rather unique budget process here in town in North Endover. We start with a revenue and fixed cost committee rather early, actually, in the fiscal year, where we talk about what our revenues are going to look like for the next year and what type of fixed cost increases we might see, things like insurance or health insurance. And so one of the things that we saw this year was really an anomaly from what we usually see, right? So typically, we have four buckets of revenue that we build our budget off of. Our tax levy was pretty level. You know, you have 2%, plus your new growth. And we actually saw some significant new growth this year, more than we typically would think we would see. State aid was rather level-funded. Where we really were most affected, and not really surprisingly, is local receipts. People didn't spend as much money, so we didn't see as much mail tax come in as we typically would have. We were also affected in kind of strange ways. For instance, nobody bought a passport, so we didn't have any passport revenue. And so instead of seeing an increase in local receipts, which we typically would see, we actually saw a decrease in local receipts, which affected our ability to create this year's budget. And so this year's budget is only increasing by 2.6%. The town side is increasing by about 0.6%. And the school side is actually increasing right at level service at about 3.6%.
So let's stay on process for a moment and ask the superintendent to share with us the school committee's budget process and how you developed in this enormously difficult COVID year.
Yeah, so first and foremost, I'd like to thank our town manager, Melissa Murphy Rodriguez. We've met weekly since, you know, COVID started, and her support along with the support of all the boards and the parents in town has been terrific. But as part of our process in meeting and thinking about the future, we started to do so early. So coming into this budget season and presenting a budget to the school committee, you know, at level services, was pretty amazing because we had the ability to add five existing positions from the year before so that we could add those to North Endover High School. A long-awaited schedule change, very well done, proposed to make it a better day at North Endover High School from the trimester schedule to a more traditional block, which is best for kids. We're able to add at North Endover High School a history teacher, a science teacher, a world language teacher, a math teacher, and a world language. So pretty amazing to do so in a level services year as many communities were looking at facing cuts.
Let's dive into the details a little bit later, but stay on process for a moment, Sasha. What does the FinCom do and how does it do it?
Sure, so there are two representatives from the finance committee that sit on the revenue and fixed cost committee. I was one of those luckily this year. It was an honor to be on that committee and to be part of analyzing our revenues and fixed costs. So we are part of that initial process. Then we receive a presentation from the town manager's office regarding her presented operating budget. We review that. We also review the capital improvement plan. And we then hear a presentation as well from the schools, from the school administration, on kind of their operating budget, their piece of it, and kind of the initiatives that they want to put forth in the next year.
So that takes us into the January timeframe, I'm presuming. And now there are budgets that are presented that are endorsed by both the select board and the school committee. You then do your work. Why don't you walk us through some of the particular initiatives and any other numbers that you'd like to inform us with?
Sure, so you remember being here last year really excited about all the things that we were rolling out, all the new initiatives. Unfortunately, this year's a little bit different. So we do have a reduced service budget on the town side. We are losing about 1.5 positions. We were exceptionally lucky that our COLAs were negotiated 1.5%, which was really a lifesaver in this year. So we did not have to lose any positions that were filled. It was actually one position that was part of our agreement last year, which we never did fill due to COVID, and now we are eliminating. And then one position that was actually vacant that we're eliminating. So we're able to maintain all of our current employees, maintain services to the public where they need to be, which is the most important, but we are facing a reduced services budget. So we're not really seeing any new initiatives this year. I am so exceptionally proud of all of our department heads. You know, we really had their requests come in in such a reasonable way. They all worked together, realizing the constraints we were going to face. And I think we were really honest about what we were facing, right? When we do our forecast for the town, we showed that we were concerned about this year. We talked about it last year, right? And unfortunately, that has come to fruition, but it's a one-year blip, and we're all holding on. And I think we'll see great things happening next year.
So we read in the papers about mitigation monies that are made available to the community. Is there an opportunity? Are they baked into our budget this year? Or help us.
Sure, so if you remember correctly, we received about $2.3 million in CARES Act funding. We have spent that, and we used that really all for COVID mitigation, PPE, funding for the schools, et cetera, health nurses.
So those expenses that would have come off the top of last year's budget
Last year's budget.
From the current year budget that we're in
Correct.
Were actually cared for by federal and state subsidy.
Yes, and so for next year, fiscal year '22, we are also receiving some funds. These funds are a lot more restrictive, and we're still kind of learning about them. So communities that were maybe entitlement communities, or mini-entitlement communities have already received their funding. We haven't quite received it yet. We're expecting a total of about $9 million.
Significant amount of money.
It's significant. And there's four buckets of spending, basically. And we're still getting guidance from the federal government about how to spend that money. But it is rather restrictive, right? And so one of the things that I think is really positive about it is that we can use it for disproportionate populations, so people who are affected negatively by COVID, which we know are students, right? And so we're really excited to be able to take some of that $9 million and invest it into our education and into our students. But there's also buckets of money that are supposed to go to economic development or to help with rent or mortgage assistance. And so we'll really be diving into that. But fortunately, in some ways, that doesn't need to come before a town meeting until we're able to kind of figure that money out over the next four years that we have to spend it.
That's great. Now, Greg, it's no secret that it was a tough year last year, or the current year even. But as you hope to progress and emerge out of that circumstance, help us with the initiatives that you noted a little bit earlier and how you believe that developed.
Yeah, a tough year, I think, in education. And for our families out there, it's probably the understatement of the year. A lot of changes, and changes quickly. Just thinking about how much more we know now as compared to where we were last year. And I am really excited about graduation outdoors. Prior to town meeting, and I'm so happy for our seniors to be able to do so, but last year, we put forth a plan based on our strategic plan, focusing on all students' professional practice and hiring and retaining the best teachers we can and staff, as well as providing a consistent and rigorous curriculum. And we put out a five-year plan and what that would look like. As a result, coming into this year with COVID and working with the school committee and working with the town, you know, we've adjusted that plan slightly. We've had the ability, as I mentioned earlier, with an initiative, to change the high school schedule, which is not a small undertaking. I mean, Principal Jackson, Mr. Nugent, they have a guidance. Students, parents, all that were involved did a really tremendous job doing so. So in a level service budget year, adding five teachers to be able to make that schedule change, which is best for kids, was pretty remarkable, and we're very excited about that. Throughout the course of this entire last year, it's been pretty amazing working with the town side. We had to adapt and adjust very quickly as things changed. So the cooperation between the town and the schools, the ability to build a better network infrastructure, to be able to make sure that every single kid in this community had access to a device and access to an access point at home, from feeding everyone in the community on a daily basis to the tents you see around town, quite a bit went into this past school year and the funding relief that was made available this past school year. And I'm thankful for the relationship that we have.
So looking forward, some lessons learned as you've inferred in any circumstance certainly exist. But the effects on students and parental anxiety will be?
Well, I mean, I think in a normal year, it's hard enough, I think, to be a teenager. I can't say this enough. You know, the number-one thing that we have to attend to is students' social and emotional learning. And when we attend to those needs, the rest will take care of itself. You know, so as long as we're attending to those social-emotional learning. So for the folks out there, I mean, it's no surprise that working so closely with the town and talking about some of that future money that may come in along with the warrant item article, the town manager early on in the process had set aside some money that if it doesn't come through the town, through the federal funding, that we have to adapt, adjust, and, you know, do some things for our students. So we know that we are looking at hiring next year one-year positions for interventionists, for coaches to build capacity, so teachers having the best practices in the classroom around professional development, as well as social workers and facilitators to run things like morning meeting through responsive classroom, all these things. So if we can tackle the social-emotional learning of our students, interject with academics and intervention, you know, progress, monitor that, see how we're doing, and keep making progress, we're going to be in good shape for any type of lost learning. I think we have the right things in place that are available to everybody going into next school year.
As the responsible party, responsible with the obligation of appointing the FinCom. The FinCom has the responsibility of reviewing the budgets and all the finance-related items. How did you take these disparate interests? And are we coming to town meeting with a common understanding?
Sure, so the finance committee voted favorable action on the operating budget. So that includes the level services budget for the schools, which, as the superintendent mentioned, also allows for five new additional positions at the high school because that was part of the previous or the current fiscal year that we're in. That was part of this budget. Those positions were not fulfilled because of, you know, being conservative due to kind of COVID constraints. So that allows the schools to then fill those positions next year while having a level services budget. So we made a recommendation on the operating budget warrant article for a favorable recommendation. Because of timing issues and when this video is taking place, we have not yet made a recommendation on the warrant article that appropriates free cash to then go to kind of COVID-related learning loss funding for the schools. I anticipate that we will make that recommendation before town meeting and provide some additional clarity on our position then. I do think that I would be kind of remiss, and the finance committee would be remiss if we didn't note that because of the work that the school is doing now with a long-term forecast that they've presented, I think it's now seven years at this point, and the subcommittee work that's kind of evaluating our school buildings, we as a community are going to need to discuss our current revenue sources not being able to meet those needs. As the taxpayers evaluate this, I anticipate that the words override or debt exclusion or both will be part of the conversation. And I think the finance committee has made it very clear that in the future, we will need to have those important discussions.
So as you've heard, budgets and town meetings don't happen in isolation. There's an interweaving of prior-year experiences, future-year obligations and desires that are written into our stepped plan for generational interest in the community. So to that end, we have a five-year capital plan as well. And that will be coming up at town meeting in addition. Help us, Melissa, with the capital plan, if you might.
Yeah, sure, so it's a $6 million capital plan. About $1.2 million of that is actually offset by either grant funding from the state or revenue that's coming from retained earnings for water or sewer enterprise funds. So about $5 million, about $4.8 million of that is actually regular capital. It's about 19 total projects. It includes the schools and the town projects. They're all really routine maintenance this year. The one that I could think that kind of sticks out to me is the new bus for the senior center, as something that maybe is not as typical of what we would see. It's anything that's over $25,000. Has to have a life of five years or more. And it's a really iterative process. We all come together and put requests forward to create this. And, you know, needs sometimes come to the top, and they sometimes float to the bottom, and we kind of collaborate in order to get to where we are.
So while the wheels on the bus go round and round, we'll go to the superintendent and talk about capital plans in this year's budget.
Yeah, so in the short term, there are things that, you know, just have to get done that people might not think of. Drainage projects are really big for us this year. You know, replacing the floor at the George Blades Dell Performance Arts Center, which has taken over, as you know, we're looking at different ways to increase space for our students in town over time. You know, originally was a performing arts center, and it's become a more of a health and wellness center. So projects like that, as well as in IT, are some of the projects that are happening on the school side.
So Sasha, there's no huge article that's coming before the community relative to capital improvements, but you've presaged that we ought to expect that there will be in the future.
I absolutely, you know, expect that there will be in the future. And one thing I wanted to note about this year as well is how we're funding capital. So the finance committee did have some lengthy conversations about the funding source for capital this year, which is free cash. So I'm sure the town manager can speak to that a bit and the
Talk to each other, please.
Her thought process. Her thought process behind that and recommendation, and the finance committee has supported that recommendation in using free cash for the capital plan this year.
Challenge to you.
Sure, so because of a lot of strange anomalies over the last few years, high building permit fees, there are planning permit fees that we typically wouldn't see, some
Amazon?
Yeah, Columbia gas money that needed to be turned over, et cetera. We have more free cash than we typically would, right? So we wanted to utilize some of that free cash this year, and we did it last year as well, to pay for our capital needs, our routine capital needs. And also noting that due to the Amazon permit fee which came in over the last couple of months, we'll be replenishing our free cash by almost $6 million just from that source. So we're in kind of a strange place right now. But additionally, we have some debt that's falling off within our budget, about $600,000. And what we wanted to do is rather
$600,000 of interest payment, you mean?
Yes, interest and principal that's falling off this year. And it would have been really easy to gobble that money up, especially since we were seeing a reduced service budget. But what we didn't want to do is we didn't want to gobble that money up because we know we're doing facilities master plan, too. We know we have some real needs coming up in the future. And we want to have capacity within our budget to take those needs on. We don't want to have to always go as a debt exclusion. We don't want to always have to impact taxpayers, right? So if we can keep that money available, which is what we did, we've held it, so we have it for next year and the year after when we start taking on these higher debt payments.
So the FinCom being the responsible party for determining whether, in fact, things are done in an appropriate fashion and making a recommendation. By the way, folks, the FinCom is the, perhaps, the most consequential but non-well-known body in the community. But the town meeting generally listens to the FinCom. Do you think these folks are acting responsibly?
I do.
That's a good answer. So let's move on and should give some comfort to the people in our community. Let's move on to community preservation, which does gobble up a little bit of money, and we're talking mostly about money today. Help us with that.
Sure, I have to say that this year's community preservation presentation was the best, I think, I've ever seen. They did such a fabulous job. It's amazing. I'm hoping that he brings it to town meeting as well and educates everyone on the projects that we're going to see. Coming out of my office, we do have two. We again have our playground renovations. And I want to say that it may be the final year of that. No promises, because I'll tell you, we usually have to go back and start again, you know, because of routine maintenance that is necessary. But it's really exciting to see that. And then also coming from our office as well is funding to basically have someone come in and do kind of a 40B analysis, determine where we are with our 10%. Will we be in the future, right? So it's not just important for us to reach our affordable housing 10% in this year, right? But we also think about in 2030, 2040, what will our population be, right? What will the census determine? And make sure that we're really thinking and planning when we're doing housing to have us be in that safe haven for those years as well.
Let's park that last thought for a moment. Any comments about community preservation from this side of the room?
I would just say that I continue to work with Melissa from the town and Dr. Mealy in our office. I mean, we monitor enrollment trends as we go. And this year's a little bit of a blip on the screen, you know, with COVID. But it's something that we keep an eye on as developments progress and develop. It's something to be watchful of and mindful of, you know, when they bring in students.
So the integration of issues across our community brings up a citizen petition, which I think is probably the only other major thing that will be considered by town meeting this year. And that citizen petition is to enact essentially a building moratorium for a two-year period, in addition to which there's a request in the warrant article itself for studies to be taken advantage of in order to discern what kind of impacts are happening on our infrastructure and elsewhere. Let me ask you first to comment on that matter and where we might sit as a community already in that place.
Sure, so, you know, housing is always an interesting topic, and it can be a really heated and emotional topic for a lot of people as well. So, you know, this year, obviously, we do have, it's our last item of the night, and we do have a housing moratorium that has been placed. And housing moratoriums are typically allowed by the attorney general when they are limited in scope, meaning there has to be a limited time duration, and also when they're attached to studies. One of the things that concerns me about this housing moratorium is that most of these studies, if not all of these studies, have really been completed by the town. We're in the middle of implementing a master plan that was one of the most iterative processes I've seen. In reviewing the documentation, so many people were involved in building this master plan. And it's really, really an important document. And we just have formed the master plan implementation committee, who's also taken a look at the moratorium as well and has, I don't want to say graded, but has gone through it to see whether or not it is in compliance with the master plan and has found that really it is not. We have an updated housing production plan that doesn't expire until 2022. We have just finished studying school capacity and determining what all of the new development that we're seeing, including development that has been perhaps coming down the pipe or has been proposed, will do to our schools and the capacity within them. We've studied, we're studying our water district right now to determine what impacts are to the water. So all the studies that are being talked about in the moratorium have been completed and are done, or being implemented, right? And so it's not a great time to be seeing something like this. You know, and I think that one of the things about a housing moratorium is that people don't always 100% understand what the repercussions of that could be, right? And so when you think of a housing moratorium, you might think about, you know, large developments, right? And that's not really what the impact is here. It could impact large developments. It also could not because a housing moratorium can't stop an affordable housing project. That's going to continue to go forward.
So there's going to be a lot of nuance about the discussion at town meeting, hoping that the motion that will be made will be appropriate so that we can, in fact, discuss it. As you can see, we're a little bit of a dynamic organization here, and Chris Nobley, the chair of our select board, has been able to join us after his professional call that when the boss calls, you have to perform, right?
Absolutely.
But here in this circumstance, you walk in at an entirely propitious time, Chris, talking about the moratorium. Has the select board made a judgment about its opinion about a moratorium?
What was interesting about the process for this, and again, I give Melissa and your team a lot of credit because they helped pull together quite a bit of information, that in combination with the work that the finance committee did, and of course, the master plan implementation committee. And that group, which is a group of citizens who are looking at how we can put that master plan into play, spent a lot of time looking at this, and they provided the select board with a really line item by line item of how the moratorium, proposed moratorium, could affect us and identifying positive impacts, negative impacts, neutral, long-term or significant. And that's a public document, and I think that's very important. I hope folks take a look at that. That, long way around, I think, helped us as a board pull together that information and the documentation because, to your point, Melissa, folks want to have some comfort in the data. And so we've got that data there. And then as a board, it was an overwhelming opinion that this moratorium would negatively affect us. And so our vote in a public meeting was significantly to oppose the moratorium.
Appreciate that, thank you. So do we have, is the finance committee going to weigh in with either an opinion or a statement relative to this matter?
Sure, so at this time, the finance committee has not made any recommend
I'll interrupt and let everybody know that we're taping on June 2nd in the afternoon. And things are dynamic, as the case may be, as we've all experienced. So there will be changes. Look at the town, at the town website relative to anything else that might be going on in the community. And I apologize for stepping in, but wanted to give people that grounding.
Please, I want to be abundantly clear about that and about the date. So we will be discussing this issue after this taping. And I anticipate that we, if the committee feels it is appropriate, may be providing a statement at town meeting on the financial impacts of the moratorium.
So clearly, an emotional issue and a consequential one for the community as well. And one of the beauties about town meeting is that town meeting itself will make the judgment. All of you who are members of town meeting who attend change immediately from citizens to legislators. Your obligation and our legislative branch is to make the determinations that you believe are the best judgments for all of the 30,000-plus people who live in our community. So I invite you once again to please come to town meeting. We're getting close to wrapping up. Do we have any other final comments that anybody would like to make about any matter at town meeting? Greg?
My hope is that people show up, that they come out to vote
That, I appreciate.
And participate. You know, again, I'll mention again, we're going to have, having graduation on the 4th, just coming up in a couple of days, and we're really excited that the commissioner and the governor changed those rules to allow us to do so. It's been quite a challenging year, but we look forward to continuing the good work with the town, passing the budget, and moving forward to provide the best education our kids deserve.
Sasha?
I think I would just ask everyone to stay current and to kind of listen to meetings and look at social media if that's an easier way for you to communicate and to listen to communications, because there's a lot going on, and there will be things that are directly impactful to you, especially if you have children in the coming years. And it's important, I think, to play a part in what happens next because it will be impactful to your family specifically.
Much appreciated. Melissa?
I hope folks at home will check out our warrant article of the day, where every day we take a warrant article and try to explain it in laypeople terms, because that's how I understand it. So I think that that's a really helpful tool. I know a lot of the items on town meeting this time are really kind of routine items, but they're all really important to our operations. And so coming to town meeting, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me in advance. I'm happy to answer anything that people have, but I look forward to seeing you there.
And Chris, you get the penultimate word.
Well, what's wonderful about town meeting is that everybody who attends, who participates, has a voice that's a multiplier. Hundreds of people are making a decision that's going to impact thousands of people. And it's not just this year, but it's incrementally. And so this town meeting, like all the ones in the past, is very important. Each one who shows up, you are carrying that torch for a lot of your neighbors. So as we've all said here, please be informed, please show up, and please support our community.
I truly appreciate that. As I hope the people who are viewing this can see, we have an extraordinary group of colleagues I enjoy working with who help make our town meeting run, but even more importantly, have the opportunity to be able to help our community run in the efficient manner in which it does. I invite you once again to be part of that process. What a better way to celebrate a birthday for our community as we just start our 375th year as a community. Since 1646, we've had town meeting. Town meeting is your local participatory democracy and the longest-standing such example of participatory democracy in the world. Take advantage of it. Join us in the sunshine, we pray, on Tuesday, June 15th at 6:00 PM at the North Andover High School in the Joe Wall Stadium. Thank you very much. I look forward to seeing you there.